Yep.
Okay, we're ready to call this meeting to order. We can all rise for allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the first place." Okay, thank you. Mr. Scott, if you can call the roll.
Yes, Ms. Oliver.
Here.
Mrs. Bell.
Here.
Mrs. Aubrey.
Here.
Mrs. Leoni.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mrs. Olson.
Here.
Mr. Scott, here. Mr. Shrobel.
Here.
And Mrs. Thompson.
Here.
Okay, thank you. And on the agenda, we're moving on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Cooper?
Hey, thank you, Madam President. All right, this evening, it's a pleasure to inform the board that one of our staff members in the business office, she's the district office administrative assistant to the CFO, Michelle Zippe, has recently been granted status as Pennsylvania Certified School Business Specialist through the Pennsylvania Association of School Business Officials. And she's to be complimented for meeting the rigid personal, ethical, and professional standards established by that program for the certification. She met the requirements through a professional commitment that was made to keep management and technical skills updated. And I would like for Ms. Michelle Zippe to come on up front here. I have a certificate and a pen to present to her, and we're going to get some photos. Okay, continuing with my report. Thirteen newly hired professional staff participated in our new teacher academy last week. Ms. Owens, who's our Director of Elementary Education and Continued Learning, did an outstanding job of planning and facilitating that experience for our newest members of our Blazer Learning Community, and we're excited to have them join our team. Today was the opening day for our professional and support staff and our contracted service providers for this 2021-22 school year. Kicked off with a breakfast for all district employees, including our contracted service providers, followed by an opening message by myself and some professional development and some meetings for the remainder of the day. And that will continue for the remaining two days prior to us welcoming our young learners back into our buildings this Thursday, the 26th. So we are excited to get everybody back in person here in in-person learning environment and able to keep them into this environment as long as possible. During the old business section of our agenda today, 7A3, the health and safety plan will be up for discussion by the board. Administration is recommending that the board consider adjusting the language of the plan to support the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics and the PAHAN language of strongly recommend with a requisite face covering mask mandate for our students the age of 11 and younger, as well as any adults in the district buildings of those same aged students. Also, administration is recommending that the board consider adjusting the language of that same health and safety plan to include the CDC, AAP, and PAHAN language strongly recommend with regard to face coverings and masks in lieu of the current language optional for our students the age of 12 and older, as well as any adults in our district buildings of those same age students. The recommendation is being asked for the board to consider due to the continued increase of the reported COVID-19 cases in our county and local communities and absent access to vaccinations for our youngest learners who are age 11 and below. Also, as a reminder, the CDC order under section 361 of the Public Health Service Act, 42 U.S.C. 264, and 42 Code of Federal Regulations 70.2, 71.31b, and 71.32b, requires persons to wear masks and face coverings while in conveniences and at transportation hubs. Therefore, employees and students utilizing district transportation are still required to wear masks and face coverings while utilizing district contracted transportation services provider sponsored transportation to the district. That is currently in the plan and the consideration will be asking the board to keep that consideration because of the federal mandate. And that concludes my report, Madam President.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Cooper. And congratulations to Ms. Zippe. I don't know if, yeah, she's still here, okay. Congratulations again. Normally, at this time, I would ask the board members to, if they have any comments or questions or concerns for Dr. Cooper, but much of what he discussed is an item all its own in the agenda, so we'll hold those until then, if that's okay, the board. Okay. Okay, I see a lot of new faces, so normally I don't read these out, but procedures for public participation. And, glasses. Prepared statements that are to be read to the board should have a copy presented to the board president prior to their being addressed. Comments on the agenda items will be made by rising and approaching to the microphone and stating your name and address and signing on the sheet provided. Signing on the sheet provided is important, especially with this many people in the room, if you could remember to do that. You will be granted up to three minutes to address the forward. Your three-minute time limit will begin when you start to speak. When the three minutes are over, you'll be asked to be seated. Any item that is not on the agenda, as well as agenda items acted upon, comments will be made at the designated section at the end of the agenda. All of that being said, do we have any comment on agenda items from the public?
I have one.
Okay.
My name is Jimmy.
Can you sign your name in?
This counts me in my three minutes.
No, no.
My name is Jimmy Fattman. Douglasville, Pennsylvania, obviously, I live in my son's drive. I got charged, goes to his school, two children go to the... Boersting. Got two nine-year-olds and a 12-year-old. I'm frankly sick and tired of this broken stuff, just much like everyone else is, everyone has their things to say. My thing that really, my wife is probably going to call me more eloquent than I am. I have to say that the CDC, what they recommend, I'm a believer in my guy. And the CDC recommends that people don't eat raw meat. However, I eat raw meat, everything is raw meat, that's what the CDC recommends. The CDC also recommends that we don't eat raw eggs. And one of our most popular salad dressing there is Caesar salad dressing. What's in it? Raw eggs. Everybody seems to eat that, they don't stop there from that. These are mandates, people, okay? Not guidelines. I'm frankly sick and tired of it. I don't want my kids wearing masks. I think it's crimes against children for them to wear masks, you know? Does anyone agree with me here? That's why people are here. These people are here because they don't want their kids wearing masks. And half the kids, half the parents don't know you're going to change it. Last time I was here, it said kids didn't have to wear masks, except in buses. Now you're changing it. Just like the government does, they're going to keep extending the goal line. That's what it is. And our president goes on today to make a big freaking deal about masks, but as he talked about that, that doesn't happen. This is just appalling. I don't want to hear anything about masks. I hope some more people come up and say, "I'm more intelligent than me," because I don't want to have to homeschool my children because of this and have them grow up to be like me, uneducated, okay? I don't want to see masks on our children if someone else comes up here and speaks about it. More people are coming. You put masks on kids, more people are coming. So I would strongly recommend, don't vote against this mask bullshit. True, option.
Good evening, my name is Jeremy Melvin. My son goes to your elementary school. My name is Jeremy Melvin. My son goes to the elementary school, and we're pretty fed up with the mask mandate. It's a complete flip-flop when everybody feels like, oh, hey, the COVID's coming back. Did a mask for the first time? Obviously not, we're back in this situation. It's pretty common sense at this point that masks aren't really helpful. One of the latest studies that came out about the masks is that there's toxic levels of CO2 within three minutes on the mask. While that wasn't deemed harmful, there hasn't been any long-term subjects on the masks. Nobody's doing them. Why are we putting our children as test subjects? That's actually pathetic, a brudles. We can't, we cannot, we can't put our children in that situation. I don't feel comfortable putting my children in that situation, and I think it's disgusting that we should have to pre our children as test subjects.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have prepared statements.
Okay. Oh, do you have two copies or just one?
Two.
Okay, then I'll take one. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Kelly Stefanelli. I live, my address is 723 Main Drive in Douglasville. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. Here we are with vaccines, antibody therapies, and medications, and we're still talking about wearing a mask a year and a half later. True. With your proposed mask mandate, it seems our schools have taken on the responsibility to try to control the virus over and above what is happening in our community. We have seen measures like this in our schools over the last year and a half that did not work. Measures like masking indoors and out, having our children run around in masks while playing sports, seating people away from each other, using plastic shields while eating, denying kids' social events, and the list goes on. None of these measures have stopped or slowed down the virus. What is the percentage of students in our school district that have COVID, that have had COVID? I'm willing to guess it's well over 60%. I know from my own personal experience, my family has had it, all of my children's friends have had it, the majority of people I know in the community have had it, all of whom recovered. I've seen district employees and their families in the community without wearing masks, shopping stores on masks, and on social media taking vacations on masks. So obviously, there's no great concern about getting or spreading the virus. I'm asking the board to stop trying to control the spread of the virus and stop the mask mandate that has clearly been ineffective and is not reflective of what is occurring in our community. COVID is a virus that is here to stay and we will be dealing with COVID every year, just like the flu. I'm asking the board to use the current system in place that is used for flu cases. If access to a building reaches a certain percentage due to illness, then that building will close for a short period of time and to clean and then reopen. This seems like a more appropriate response to manage a virus that has already largely circulated through our community, and vaccines are available to those who want it. Make masks a personal decision for protection and not an enforcement in schools.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I even have this to you, I'll read it, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
I'm Michael Arnold, I live on Oak Street Road in Douglasville. The mission statement of the Dennywood Area School District is taking pride in growing diverse learners in a safe environment. What is meant by a safe environment? The district has taken great measures against bullying, sexual harassment, and a number of other potential causes of harm. Safety from Z should be on this list. This year, although there is a COVID mitigation policy in place, it is lacking in a mask mandate. The American Academy of Pediatrics recommendations for in-person learning is that anyone over then age two wear masks regardless of vaccine status. In addition, the CDC recommendation recommends universal indoor masking by all students age two and older, staff, teachers, and visitors to K-312 schools regardless of vaccination status. The Pennsylvania Department of Education COVID-19 resources for K-312 web days for face coverings and masks is a direct link to the CDC guidelines. The district's health and safety plan summary dated July 26, 2021 states, "The health and safety of the school district students and staff remains a top priority." The school district policy, face coverage are optional for all individuals in our school buildings, staff, students, parents, and visitors, is in direct opposition to the AAP and the CDC recommendations. This will put unvaccinated, unmasked individuals in direct contact with children who do not have the ability to be vaccinated. This is not a safe environment for either the children or the adults with whom they will interact. There are children and staff in this district with conditions for whom a COVID infection could be deadly, or you will accept that responsibility. The district and the world have seen that face masks are an important part of controlling the spread of COVID-19. The Delta variant is much more transmissible and is infecting children at a much higher rate. If the community has endured and survived one year of mask training, while it is uncomfortable, it's a small sacrifice we can render to provide. It's withmen your ability to provide a safer environment against COVID. You can mandate masks in the schools for all individuals over age two. You do not need to wait for a mandate from the government or anyone else in order to embody your mission state of providing a safe environment by protecting the most precious assets we have, our children. Parents have been invited to back-to-school night. With no mask mandate, I am uncomfortable entering the building despite the fact that I am vaccinated. How can I send my child to that building if I am ill, unsafe, and pregnant? Thank you very much.
That's okay. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Phil Marchiano, I'm a nurse practitioner. I'm just going to look at numbers here, and the guidelines that CDC is recommending are not in line with a lot of the numbers we're seeing. First website I linked to you guys is the most recent numbers from Berks County. The cases of COVID per 100,000 people was 120. The hospitalizations from COVID per 100,000, zero. A study out of Copenhagen, which is the next link I can do, which randomized and controlled, not like that study out of North Carolina. They used N95 masks to show the decrease in cases by 0.03% for 18- to 39-year-olds. It was less than that for 18-year-olds, statistically insignificant. From the CDC, there are 70 million school-aged children in the United States. 361 died of COVID, and that is a terrible thing, but every one of them had a serious underlying condition. That puts it at, well, that's in 1, under 1%, 0.1% of disease, and that's trashing it from the inception of the disease, not here, like the flu in the moment. And then, when we talk about masks and proper care and washing of them, many of the children aren't wearing masks properly. But now, I'm wearing the N95, which was the only mask studied. And to clean a mask, you need to have it washed at 160 degrees temperature, which is only industrial hospital washing machines. The typical home washing machine only gets up to 140 degrees maximum. Will not kill the virus. And that's not all I have right now.
Hi, my name is Heidi Fisher, live in Nyacke, Rhode Island. But I encourage the board to make sure masks be optional, as this is not a one-size-fits-all solution to preventing an outbreak of COVID-19. As a parent, it should remain my right to decide what is best for my child as it pertains to medical issues. There are to date no conclusive studies which indicate masking with surgical masks or cloth masks provides substantial protection against respiratory viruses. The boxes of masks actually say they will not provide any protection against COVID-19 if you use surgical masks. Check out the box.
As a fact.
There are studies, however, that do indicate the harmful effects of long-term masking. Increase in headaches, decrease in oxygen in the blood, and increased carbon dioxide levels, which can lead to confusion, decreased thinking ability, and overall of paracognitive abilities. If you are sick and wearing a mask, you are actually re-breathing the virus you're supposed to be expelling, which increases the viral load in your lungs and nasal passages. Masks have been shown to exacerbate breathing difficulties and anxiety. In young children, facial expressions are integral to human connection and genetic development. I cannot and would not make medical decisions for anyone else's children, and that's why I agree with your current health and safety plan that masks should be up to the parent. Thank you. I'm sorry, I was not prepared to say anything.
That's okay. And just sign your name.
Yes. Danielle Waltieri, out of the 302 Lennygood. I think it's actually perfect that I'm going after Ms. Fisher, because I would like to explain a little bit about what she's saying. I have four children. As of this year, now they're in preschools, last year, but I had one in age four. My 10-year-old, who was in fifth grade, wore the mask every day, as was given the rules by the teacher, by the school, everything. He didn't really go to the stores, he didn't take that much. We kept him home, he played with his friends, I was in. Yet somehow, wearing the mask, he managed to get viral strep throat. Okay, well, certainly didn't protect against that. On top of which, because he was wearing the mask every day, all day long, as Ms. Fisher explained, he was then breathing that out and breathing it back in. And I'm getting emotional, I'm sorry, I will try not to. Some people here know the story firsthand. I spent two weeks in St. Christopher watching my 10-year-old son fight for his life because he ended up with viral encephalitis that affected his limbic system and he lost cognitive everything. He couldn't see us, he didn't know we were in the room, he didn't know where he was or what he was doing. And for two weeks, I watched this child marinate on himself and not have any clue of where he was or what he was doing. They gave him four COVID tests because they didn't believe the one before, so they gave him another one. He had six spinal taps because they just kept trying to test for everything and everything and everything. And he ended up, we learned, with viral encephalitis that affected his limbic system, and thank God, he lived. And he's fine and he's doing well, but he is suffering some minor neurological damage. So please, just make it an option for the parents. Don't, don't, don't force it on us. There are some people who want to wear them, fine, that's their choice. I don't discredit them, I don't see them as bad people, that's your choice, it's a choice. We live in America, we were allowed to have choices.
My name is Valerie Fattman, I'm in Amity Township. Thank you for having me, Sam. I was here last meeting.
Yeah. Go ahead and look it up.
Last meeting, when we sat through the agenda, I really didn't know what to expect, but once the administration was sitting with me, I thought maybe I could ask them to clarify. It was mentioned during the meeting that by submitting our health and safety guidelines to the federal government, we are yet, as a district, are at least, we can confirm, is it $2.75 million funded when we submit our guidelines? Is that correct? So the issue that I have is, is like, I was thinking about this scenario, and all I keep thinking about is, before Jesus was betrayed, there was 30 pieces of silver exchanged for his life. And though our children are not Christ, I'm not saying that, I feel like submitting a guideline outside of what is, I think, ethical, is a crime against children.
And let me, let me just clarify, I don't mean to interrupt you.
Sure. I appreciate your clarity.
No, no, it's okay. We need to have a plan. It doesn't, there are certain items that the plan has to have, but whether or not we have masking in the schools or anything like that, the government doesn't care what's in the plan, as long as we have one.
To this recommendation.
This has nothing to do, yeah, yeah.
If you don't recommend masks.
It doesn't change anything about our funding.
I just wanted to make sure.
No, I understand.
And I thank you for that.
Yeah, we just need to have a plan in order to be eligible for that funding. We don't, it doesn't need to say anything specific about masking.
To clarify, you have to wear masks on buses.
Oh, that's correct. Yeah, the one, the one about buses, that one has to, that, that's, that's a federal mandate, we can't, that's not something we can change, and that's in our, that's in our health and safety plan. But whether or not we make a change or don't make a change makes no impact, we just have to have a plan.
I just wanted to make sure.
I understand. I just wanted to, I just wanted to point that out.
So that being said, I was feeling some sort of way, because it didn't sit well with me from last meeting, which is why I came up to clarify, so making sure if anybody else was here and thought the same thing. So thank you for the clarity. The other issue I was thinking was, though we are masking our transportation, we as the parents have the option of whether or not we put our children on the bus or drive them to school. And I think there should still be the same option in school of whether or not we should mask our children or not, vaccinated or unvaccinated. The science has proven that the size of the virus is .125 microns. The cloth masks that we wear are anywhere between 6 to 9, it depends on the brand. So clearly, the virus is way smaller than the spores on the mask. But one thing that I was going to say is, is though the holes on the mask are larger, it's still, what they call, what I think would happen with a previous study, it's still traps. Some people have viruses that live active in their mouths, and if they're constantly re-moving to get it in, it'll land on their skin, it could cause any neurological damage that we could hurt, or it could infect the lungs and cause fungal lung damage. Now, my daughter was masked the entire time in the immediate center, and I had had to dis�urgen the nebulizer four to five times every other month, and I feel attributed to the mask. My daughter's an asthmatic, we already have a difficulty in breathing as asthmatics, and therefore, I'm asking that you please not mask our children. It is up to the parent. If anybody wants to wear a mask, I think they should have the freedom to do so, but I also ask that we're not vilified if we send our kids without masks. But I also ask that we're not vilified if we send our kids without masks.
I just want to point out that I let her talk well past the point that the red light went on because I interrupted her to talk during her time because I stole her time, so I gave it back to her. But just whoever's coming up, just please watch, watch the lights. That's all I want to say.
Thank you for your time this evening and for your listening ear. My name is Lina Howie. And I live on three one K Street in Amity. My son is a sophomore at my high school, and my daughter just graduated in June. My husband is also a ninety-four alumni student. Over the past year or so, my son developed a bad piece of cystic acne, which occurs when bacteria and dead cells get trapped in the skin surface and become infected. Why would I be telling you this? Isn't anyone else's business? No. It's embarrassing. Planned children already suffer from self-esteem and anxiety issues. Perhaps my son is more genetically prone to this condition than others might be, but I know that wearing a mask every day at school for an entire year, including many hours of sweaty soccer and volleyball practices, certainly did not help the situation. Over the past three months with the help of a dermatologist, his situation has definitely improved and his skin is more clear. He also hasn't worn a mask since the last day of ninth grade, and we know that that helped. I can stand here and pick one cystic acne after another, proving why masks are not beneficial where, especially for our children. But what I feel is right for my children might not be right for someone else's, and that's okay. We can disagree and be respectful. But what is not okay is for someone else to demand or tell me that my way is wrong. And that's already kind of a huge issue. The community school board and school district have spent long hours creating a health and safety plan that implements options to accommodate all the variables for families in our district. If someone is not comfortable sending their child to school, there's laser virtual academy, that's an option. If someone wants to send their child, but would feel better if they were wearing a mask, and they can, they have that option. For those who feel a hundred percent comfortable allowing their child to attend maskedness, they can too. That's another option. We are grateful and appreciative to the school for these options. Please, do not take away our right as parents to decide what is best for our own children.
You can stand over to the government. It'll roll your light.
If you want to speak, you can come to the.
I'll speak, I'll follow.
Okay, all right.
My name is Mike Serrano. I live at one oh four Latour Lane in Douglasville, Pennsylvania. You know, I could go on here and rant and rave about my personal opinion of how we got here or where we're going. But I just want to take a look around the room at the people that are here that are passionately asking you not to mask their kids. We have to stop outrage at the local level. That's here. Every surrounding district, I believe, has made decisions regarding masks. But Daniel Boone needs to stand up for themselves.
Prove it.
Okay? We have to stop it here. Please, don't be lenient in this process. Don't follow the leader. Think about these kids. Think about these parents. And their right to choose for their kids is being taken away from them. Their freedoms are being taken away from them. It's happening everywhere. You see it nonstop. Daniel Boone has an opportunity here to think for themselves, to be different, and do what's right. Okay? I had a whole thing, you know, I was, I was gonna read, but I don't even have to go where I was gonna go with it. You just have to look at these parents here who are pleading with you. Don't take their rights away from parenting their own children. It's not right. It's not right. And I don't know about the monetary situation with the state. If you get money if they're masked for the first fifteen days or not, I don't know the whole situation. But if that's what they're offering you to do this, don't take it. Don't take it. Stand up for yourselves and let these parents and let us decide what's best for our kids.
Prove it.
Just to let you know that, you know, what we decide as far as masking has no impact on our funding. Just let you know. I, I don't know if, if that's out there or not, but it doesn't, it doesn't impact us at all. You can pick it up. Like karaoke night.
Anyway, talking a lot about choice, I just wanted to ask that safe andest virtual learning be an option for the private since the technology is part of the place. It sounds like it's not really the virtual education. It's an option. It's a little disconnected. You might get to be involved. It's connected as well, if I say. And I just wanted to throw that out there as an option. So, no, it's being considered.
Yeah, if you're, if you're looking for something option other than in-person instruction, reach out to your son or daughter's building principal, and they will make arrangements based on your individual circumstance.
You know, the virtual academy, though?
Digital learning and, and virtual.
Because I'm being told that's the only option.
Reach out to your son or daughter's building principal, principals, and they will, they will work with you.
For virtual, just making sure for virtual.
Virtual or digital? Yes.
Anyone else?
My name is Erin Jerka. I'm a primary care pediatric nurse practitioner in Berks County. Imagine I, a medical provider, came along and determined that I should make recommendations about how information is taught within school, how this very issue should be handled, and so on. One that argues that not working in education is likely not my place in this situation is. So my question supersedes this. What makes you all believe you're in positions to make medical recommendations for the children of the community school district that are directly against the recommendations from the CDC and the AAP? For those now here at both agencies currently recommend masking of all individuals within the school buildings, regardless of vaccination status? Those unfortunately believe they know better than the CDC and the AAP? I truly hope your answer is no. Decisions regarding masking policies need to be based on science and not feelings. I know that we have parents, teachers, and other individuals who do not feel that masks are necessary, that they cannot work, or that they're not important. I acknowledge your feelings. However, science and medicine are not based on feelings or facts. The fact is COVID-19 numbers are increasing, and since the rise of the Delta variant, we are seeing more children infected. There are hospitals in our country with pediatric units that are full due to COVID-19. The fact is that COVID-19 is dangerous, the numbers are increasing, and masks do work. Our school district should be voting for masks based on facts and not feelings. According to the AAP, 4.4 million children have been infected with COVID-19, with just 121,000 of them added in the first week of August. Children once accounted for 14% of COVID infections, but the number has climbed already to 18%. These increasing numbers are happening while children have yet to return to school. Our schools are duty to keep our children safe while they're in the school setting. If masks are not implemented across the board, it will be impossible for the district to stay in keeping our kids safe. We know that some cases may still happen with masking, but we need to do our best to ensure the environment that children are in is as safe as environment possible. It is time to make decisions based on facts and not feelings. It is time for the school board, the parents, the teachers, and other school personnel to recognize that the recommendations of the CDC and the AAP are the right decisions for our children.
Hi, my name is Robert Rasi. I live at nine two zoom in Douglasville. I was here for the community hall meeting last week. First of all, I just want to say I respect everyone's opinions and feelings in this matter. I sympathize with the board for the decision that they can make, but I fully support obviously masking and following the CDC and AAP guidelines. Boring that that's not the choice. As someone else stated, I want to have the option. All of the options that we had last year, I want. So I, I have followed up with my, the principals in both the intermediate and the primary center. Intermediates there, they said they're offering the VVDL. For my situation, that works for me. I'm good with that. Primary centers, although they are not offering the VVDL, they're only offering virtual learning, which does not work for me at all. My kids still need to have that interaction with the teachers and the, and the school and the classmates, and have that interaction and that positivity while still being the same. Because if I can't send them to school where everyone is being fit masks, which is, is per the most effective way to reduce the amount of COVID cases, then I need that, that option where they can do distance learning for the, as a replacement for. And I pretty much demand that option for, for any, any student in the community district.
No. I'll, I'll, I'll just take his name.
Yeah, you're gonna pick it up. I'm sorry.
So again, my name is Megan Major. I live in Douglasville. First and foremost, I want to thank everyone for being here, all of you, whether you agree, disagree, whatever. I think it's important that everyone's here for our kids in whatever way they are. I do also want to say that as prominent as it seems of people who do not want masking out here, there are so many of us that do. It's just that it's not insulting, right? We're just not quite as loud. And unfortunately, we're often guilted to be quiet and not feel a certain way. And it's, if we're seen in regulars masks on, we're automatically weird and, and oh, God, where she's born, like. So we've staffed that so many times, and unfortunately, we don't show up. Or we show up and we sit quietly in the corner out of fear, to be honest. I mean, some of these people are so loud, and, you know, some of us women may be a little bit intimidated by some of that. So please also know that when we're hearing these what seems to be masses, there are so many more of us that are calm, quiet, and afraid to speak out. As may have objected, this board is to protect the education of our children with additional responsibility compared to safety. Without masks, children are substantially more exposed to the virus, which shall be seen in preschool pretendings. This also puts their siblings home pretendings, as well as the remainder of their class. As statistics have shown, our children are falling behind in education, unfortunately, due to the shutdowns happening in the last year. With Delta being more, you know, more impactful for our children, we have a heightened responsibility this year against last year. I don't see those only losses. And this is all assuming that our children are healthy enough and alive to reassess. I think the most important thing is that, you know, I question those of you. If you, if you're wrong, right? If you're wrong and putting on a mask, we have some fabric. And I am so sorry for the woman who told that horrible story about her child. I, I feel for you with a hundred percent. But in most cases, if we're wrong, they're wearing the fabric they were using all of last year. My younger children are so used, but they're like, hey, I'm putting on this today. Most of them are fine with it. They respond well. If you're wrong, and you, I, I promise you, if you are wrong and your child ends up in the hospital bed, you will plead for everything in your being to wish that you had made the other choice.
That's like I am.
Hey.
I understand that. And I, no.
Please do not interrupt the people that are up at the mic. I, I gave everybody that's come up to the mic their time to speak.
And this is what I'm saying to you people, to, to the board. This is what happens for those of us who want masks. There are so many more of us. Please do not assume that this room represents this our community because it does not. I thank you, you know, if this is underhanded to Delta variant, this is not the same as last year, guys, it's just not. And those of us who have pleaded for a child's life, and I feel for you, I, you know, I do. We want to do that. But take it back in an instant if you realize that something is wrong.
Thank you.
It's choice. It's choice.
I, 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 seriously, I, I do not want crosstalk between the different factions in this room, or I'm gonna clear the room.
I'll probably be about one minute. I'm not about your mom, Marie. I'm here.
Oh, yeah. You can go ahead. Can you pick up the mic?
I'm not about your mom, Marie. And I'm also actually insulted that you feel that a few loud people are here under what's representing because I also agree with them. And I could say, you can all go back quick. Well, I know a thousand people that want masks and don't want masks. I know, look at my data. This statistic doesn't, doesn't mean your truth is my truth or my truth is your truth. But I do agree that everybody should be doing that research. And I can also say.
Can you address the board?
Yes, I'm sorry. But now I'm.
No, no, I'm.
I'm just saying, like, I was in consulting with you. Anyway, so my question is, it's always a good question. Is there a same situation where, like, we had a group, like, you had a parent who's sitting down speaking now about hybrid virtual going to school? Could you do that as a team? Or do you have to make a decision today?
We have to make a decision today. Oh, let me, let me amend, before you start, I'm sorry. Let me amend that. We do have to make a decision today about what the first day of school looks like, but we, we can at any time update our, our health and safety plan. We can do that at any time along the school year.
Yeah, every day, every day.
Right.
We could do it any two hundred days, murder.
Right. Okay, I just wanted to, I just wanted to make that clear. I'm sorry about that.
Hi there, I'm Heather Peterson, Southsboro Street in Berks Row. I wasn't gonna say anything, but I'm one of those quiet ones again, apparently. And I'm a hundred percent for options, choice, do what you feel is best for your child. But what my ask is, that I have one child, and, sorry, one little child. And she is under the age, well, she's ten, so she cannot be vaccinated. So my ask is that we look at the number, well, look at if we would make a plan that anyone that's under the age that can be vaccinated needs to be masked. And high school, middle school perhaps would then be optional. I just feel like if we look at numbers, if we look at the guidelines from CDC and the Pediatric Association or Academy, they are recommending that. So my ask is just that we think about the, if they're under the age that can be vaccinated, I feel that they should have a mask. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Samantha Schaffler.
Yeah, yeah, you got, you got it.
I live on Nine Hill Road in Berks Row. I'm not as prepared as some of these people. I don't really have statistics. I'm just a point of view of a high schooler. I know I have been vaccinated. The government was pleading everyone my age to get vaccinated for school. I did, I got vaccinated. And I just, I'm gonna see my friends. I know a lot of my friends have gotten vaccinated. I know they, they are fed up with the masks as well. I mean, they're early age to get vaccinated. They had ample opportunity to get vaccinated. And if you don't want to, you can wear a mask, that's perfectly fine. But to obstruct my autonomy and my decisions to wear masks, even though I've taken the necessary medical precautions that everyone was imploring I take, I think that that is unreasonable. I don't know if there's an explanation for that. It sounds kind of pretty cheap here, but. It sounds kind of pretty cheap here, but this is just what I was thinking while everyone was presenting. I couldn't help but agree, I couldn't help but think about the past few months when I have decided, you know, back and forth whether or not I should get vaccinated. And I'm not particularly immunocompromised, but I wanted to go through this school year without a mask, if I'm being honest. And I didn't know what the regulations were going to be, so I prepared as though you had to be vaccinated. But I think that choice is definitely the way to go, in terms of regard to the high school, that's where I am. I don't want to mention that. But yeah, I think because everyone's able to get vaccinated, they're of the age, and I guess if you are medically compromised, if you're immunocompromised, then you should be taking the necessary individual precautions that you need to take, like wearing a N95 mask, or like getting vaccinated, or maybe switching to online learning. But as far as it goes for everyone, I think that choice is definite, choice should definitely be the option for people who are above the age of 12 or in high school or middle school. So just, yes, take that into consideration, I will make the decision, the point of view of a high schooler. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Hardy, resident of Boston Drive in Danube High School.
Can you pick up the microphone?
I will.
Yeah.
My question is, in reference to the DDTL, Dr. Cooper said that it's on a based and funded principle, and it's a key, key basis, that saying that I don't want my child wearing a mask to school count as an accepted thing for my child to do with the case of it all. And is the board prepared for parents to say, we don't want kids wearing masks in school? We want DDTL, or so use children to the age of 18 or other outside schooling precautions?
And I'm sorry, if you're not tall enough to lean into the mic, we haven't, we haven't, as far as we can. Okay, I haven't, we haven't turned up as far as we can.
This was not planned, but I'm glad to be speaking. Okay, thank you very much. My name is Lydia Rieger. I live at 211 Ben Franklin Highway West, Ridgefield. And I've lived in this community for over 40 years. I went to the old elementary school, vanity. I support the community, and that's why I'm up here tonight. And I have a question for all of us, including the board, what are you afraid of? What are you afraid of? I see, I don't see any of the board actually wearing masks here tonight, I'm just noticing that. I'm encouraging the school district to make mask-wearing a choice. I understand you have to have a plan, you've got to put that into action. Oh, and by the way, forgot to mention, I don't have a child who goes to your school. I homeschool, I've homeschooled since the beginning, but I'm here to support the community, and I am so thrilled that I'm homeschooling now. But I do support the community, and that's why I'm here. So I'm encouraging you to make mask-wearing a choice. And I want to remind everyone that mandates, recommendations, that's what they are. They're not laws. We have God-given rights, and one of them is to life. And what does that mean? Breath, oxygen, that is our right, that's our God-given right. So even if, anywhere, if it's mandated that you must wear a mask, that's against the law. And I just want to remind everybody of that. And finally, we all have our own truth meter inside, so if you feel one way or the other, that's your own truth meter, that is okay. But don't put your view of what you think's right for you onto somebody else.
Truth.
Thank you.
Hi, I am J.C. Born, and I did not find it to be for tonight either, but I worked out some practice just in case I got a little passionate about it. I just want to first off say thank you, because last year, I applauded Danny Boone School this year, that we were in school from day one. And my boys, who are now going to be in third and fourth grade this year, they wore masks last year because the year before that was so traumatic and painful that they would have done anything to be back in school. Now that we're here, a year later, everyone keeps talking about the CDC, so can I bring some statistics up from the CDC? As of July 20th, 2021, 18 months since the start of the pandemic, 335 children ages 17 and under have died of COVID-19. I am not dismissing that pain at all. But out of 49,725 children, 0 to 17 years old, have died from all causes last year. That comes to 0.67% of deaths among children who had COVID-19. I also have the statistics for 18 years or plus. If the numbers don't match, that's less than 1% of all children who have died from COVID-19 over the last 18 months. More children have died over the 2019 to 2020 seasonal flu, and that was just a six-month period. Were we all wearing masks and social distancing then? No, you weren't. So if we're gonna talk about facts, statistics, trust the science, right here it is, straight from the horse's mouth. I am all about freedom and choice over our children. If you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. If you want to homeschool, homeschool. If you want to get vaccinated, get vaccinated. But I firmly believe no one has the power to take away the authority over what happens to my children. The only difference here between masks or no masks is that I want masks to be optional. I don't want my views to be forced by someone else. So therefore, if you want everyone to mask, you're taking away the power of authority that I have over my children and what is done to them. But it's the only difference, and the only win-all situation, the only option would be it's options, and having respect, and look at the statistics, look at the actual science, look past CDC and look past the Academy of Pediatrics. There are other news sources out there. Thank you very much for the time, and please take consideration that we just pledge allegiance for justice and liberty for all. Well, part of that liberty is making choices for our children.
Well said.
Going once?
Good evening, Danny Boone School Board. My name is Kevin Muckwalter. I'm a lifelong resident of Amity Township and a graduate of Danny Boone High School. My wife and I have three children in this room. We strongly encourage the school board to simply avoid band-aid masks and keep them optional. In a recent study article published by The Fact-Based America, June 22nd of this year, University of Florida Laboratory found dangerous levels nearly of all children's mask-tested pathogens. Pathogens including bacteria that cause tachyria, pneumonia, and meningitis. Six masks worn were set for analysis, and T-shirt and unworn masks were the controls. Five of the six worn masks were contaminated with parasites, fungus, and bacteria. One mask was found to contain a virus that causes the fatal system to cease to cattle and deer. Other pathogens detected causing ulcers, acne, and strep throat. Gross and disgusting. On July 1st of this year, JAMA Pediatrics, a top-rated monthly journal published by the American Medical Association, revealed forcing children to wear a face mask leads to adverse health effects. Face masks increase the amount of carbon dioxide in inhaled air to unhealthy levels. The study measured CO2 in 45 children ages 6 to 17 while wearing masks. The normal content of CO2 in the air is 400 parts per million. Anything over 2,000 parts per million is considered unacceptable by the German Federal Environment Office. The JAMA report measured averages of 13,120 parts per million to 13,910 parts per million of CO2 in the inhaled air, only after three minutes of wearing a mask. That's six times higher than an unsafe threshold. The elevated CO2 levels are created by the dead space volume of a mask, which collects exhaled CO2 quickly after a short time. The authors of this study urge those who are forcing children to wear masks, consider this scientific evidence when making their decision. In conclusion, the authors of the findings suggest that children should not be forced to wear a mask. Bullying is unacceptable anywhere, especially in the school environment. I ask why should parents feel allowed to bully other parents one way or the other with mask-wearing? I'll finish this and toss the pundit. I'm no longer going to be a prisoner of your fear. I'm no longer going to wear a mask or cater to you because you are scared. Your fear is not my fear, and your fear does not have the right to interfere with my life, my children's life, their health, or their future. Thank you for this option.
Thank you. Going once? Going twice? Okay. Thank you, everyone who came forward to speak, and those that didn't. Okay. Moving on to announcements. I've got a list of agenda edits that I need my glasses for. For agenda edits, we're gonna add, under personnel consent items, we're gonna add under 5A112, a retirement resignation of professional staff. Scott Kempis, art teacher at Danny Boone Area Middle School, resignation effective today, August 23rd, 2021. Subject to, up to a 60-day hold, per the contract. Addition of, under 5A125, motion to approve retirement resignation under classified. Kaylin Richards, full-time, seven hours per day instructional aide at the Amity, I'm sorry, at the Danny Boone Area Primary Center. I still get those old names stuck in my head, and that's not even, that wasn't even Amity. Resignation effective August 20, 2021. 5A214, motion to approve the following appointment, subject to submission of required background checks and employment review documentation. Classified Lauren Huber at full-time instructional aide at the primary center, 183 days per year, seven hours per day, at the current rate 15.75 an hour, replaces Kay Richards from above. And we're deleting the personnel consent item 5A212 to approve the appointment for Eileen Shevick. And let me just mention to the recording, to the secretary, the first one I mentioned, Scott Kempis, is the only one that hasn't been added to the board agenda. So that's the only one that's not included. So that's 5A112, Scott Kempis. All the rest of them, all the rest of them been added already. And there will be an executive session after tonight's meeting to discuss personnel. Moving on to consent items. We have 3A1 through 8. Do I have a motion for those? Ms. Bell, Mr. Struble, any discussion required on those? Hearing none, can we have a vote?
Yes, Ms. Albright?
Ms. Albright, you there? Ms. Albright? Still says it's gone.
No, I'm lost.
We'll circle back to her.
Okay.
Okay. Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey?
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes? Mr. Struble?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson? Mrs. Olson?
Yes. Yeah, we accidentally hung up on her. Hold please. I apologize.
What's her number?
I don't know.
Okay.
It was Dr. Cooper's fault, it was really my fault.
Hey, Bev, okay, we got you back. I'm gonna put you back on speaker here. Yeah, I'm gonna put you back on speaker here, okay?
Thanks.
All right.
You have a duty to tell her what we're-
Yeah, it's the vote for the, I don't know when we cut you off. It's a vote for the consent items, 3A inclusive, 1 through 8, the consent items.
You celebrate?
Yeah.
Thank you. I apologize. All right, finance added consent. 3A1 through 3, do I have a, do I have a motion for those?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Scott, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, do we need to have any discussion on any of that?
This is 4A1 through 4.
Four, did I say 3A? Excellent. 4A1, 4A1 through 3, Mr. Scott, are you okay with that amendment?
Yes.
And who was the second? Ms. Thompson, are you okay with that amendment? Okay, sorry about that. I can't remember if we discussed the chillers at the committee of the whole. We did, didn't we?
No, we didn't.
Oh, we didn't.
That was on my update.
Does anybody need to ask any questions about the chiller? Chiller, for the train, did you raise your finger, Ms. Leoni? Or no, okay, you're good. Okay, if we don't have any discussion, then we can have a vote on finance added consent. Mr. Scott?
So this is 4A1 through 3?
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey?
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes? Mrs. Struble?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
Mrs. Albright?
It's hugely loud.
Yeah.
All right. Moving on to personnel, added consent items as amended, 5A1 through 3. 1 through 3 inclusive. Mr. Struble, do I have a second? Ms. Bell? Any discussion of anything under there, or any of the amendments that we made? Okay, hearing none, Mr. Scott? Oh, yes.
Who was second?
Ms. Bell.
Thank you. Okay, so this is 5A1 through 5A3?
Yep.
Okay. So, Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey?
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes? Mr. Struble?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Ms. Thompson? Ms. Olson?
Yes.
And Ms. Albright?
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to program added consent. 6A1, do I have a motion for that? Mr. Struble, do I have a second?
I'll make that.
Mr. Scott, any discussion of the job description? Okay, can I get a vote?
Sure. Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Godfrey? Ms. Leoni? Mr. Miller?
Okay.
Mr. Scott, yes? Mr. Struble? Ms. Thompson? Ms. Olson?
Yes.
And Ms. Albright?
Ms. Albright?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Moving on to old business, can I get a, can I get a motion for 7A1 and 2? Ms. Thompson, can I get a second? Ms. Leoni? Any comments, questions, concerns about the minutes from the previous meetings? Okay, can I get a vote?
Again, Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Godfrey? Ms. Leoni? Mr. Miller? Mr. Scott, yes? Mr. Struble? Ms. Thompson? Ms. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Albright?
Yeah.
Okay, so moving on to, I guess, the main event. So 7A3, can I get a motion for that, for the discussion to start? And then we'll discuss. Ms. Bell? Oh, I don't, I don't need it for just to discuss? All right. Okay, so let's, let's discuss. Start, to start with, I just want to say, I do appreciate everybody coming out tonight, no matter what your opinions are. At the last meeting, we had about, I want to say, four people speak, all, all in favor of masking, and nobody spoke to, I think maybe one person might have spoken to say that they didn't want us to do any masking. I just wanted to say that to just preface what I'm going to say right now. I heard 12 people, 13 people say they, they didn't want us to have masking, and I heard seven people say that they would like us to have some form of masking here for the coming school year. I just wanted to point out that, I mean, depending on, depending on who is animated, that, that kind of informs who's here to speak, and, which is why I just, I try not to let that sway the way that I'm going to vote, because on a different night, you might see a completely different student body. When we, when we had these discussions last, not student body, a completely different group of people animated for a, you know, for a different outcome. When we asked, when we asked questions over the summer, we did, we did poll people about what we were going to do this year, but July looks a lot, July looked a lot different than, than this current time period does in Berks County. So those, those results that we had from what people wanted us to do back in July don't really, don't really speak to the reality of what's here now. So, listen, so let's start. Who wants to start? I'm looking at you. I'm looking at you, Mr., oh, we'll start, we'll start with Mr. Struble, go ahead.
I have a question. In regards to the all options, I was under the impression that you still had all available options to parents, for example, if somebody wanted to go virtual, then go virtual. If they wanted to do synchronous learning, have all the equipment for that, that would be able to continue along. Or if they wanted to do it in person, they could do it in person. Is that an accurate statement?
That is correct. The way that's being handled is to reach out to the building principal to share what the preference is, so that they, you can have a conversation and those options.
I just want to make sure that it is an option, that you reach out, and not me personally, Struble, now?
Yes.
They're not, it's going to get a no. It's an option.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that that was clear. One of the things we did last time?
Absolutely.
The last time we were doing this, we wanted to make sure we gave a lot of options out.
Right.
That when we started, either open or close the school, or whatever we did, we wanted to give a lot of options, that's what we did.
So the current, so two weeks ago, the recommendation from the school, from the, from the administration was to go with masks being optional and encouraged. Right now, the, the recommendation from the administration would be for us to amend that, to change the recommendation at the, up for kids 12 and under, 12 and over, to be strongly encouraging masking, and, but still not making it required. And for students 11 and below to require masks, and to require masks worn by those teachers and school professionals that are working with those age groups. So that's the, that's the recommendation. Let's discuss. Don't all start at once.
I'll say something.
Okay.
Sorry, I have four children in the district, sorry, everybody out there. I personally find masks horrible to wear. I'm asking.
Can you speak a little louder? I'm sorry.
So, I personally don't like them, but sitting on this board and listening, in addition to what you said during parents' talk, we receive so many emails from parents concerned because their kids have conditions that affect them. My children have been blessed before helping children. But I would never want to be in a position where I have a child who are afraid to send this to them. So personally, I think that the recommendation for 11 and under, masks is great, and 12 and over is optional. I personally, that's my personal preference.
Go ahead, Ms. Leoni.
So I just want to give some data that I was able to pull up. So, okay, I'm sorry. All right, so I just wanted to give some data on why I believe that masks should be optional for all ages. We're saying that masks should be recommended for kids 0 to 10, right? Or 11? 11?
Five, yeah, five, two.
So there have been zero deaths in children 0 to 10. I just pulled that up from the data. In 0 to 9, we've had 53,537 cases.
Who's we?
Pennsylvania.
Okay.
From ages 10 to 19, we've had 137,290. So if we are going from sign by science and data, we're actually doing the opposite of what is set. In Berks County alone, currently, right now, this moment, only 18 deaths are being used by pediatric patients. I just looked that information up as well. Hospitalizations in Pennsylvania in regards to children is, death, sorry, is 0.3% deaths. 1 to 1.9% resulting in hospitalization when they did get COVID. I also wanted to talk about this quarantine. I know people have been talking about the quarantine in regards to if we don't have masks, we're going to quarantine. I don't think, last year, we had people quarantining in Berks County. So I just wanted to give that data to you guys so that you can kind of see why I believe that things should be optional. Those rates, in our district alone, in the last seven days, and this is adults and children, we had 36 cases. And I don't think that that warrants. One child is good, four child. I would like to say my child went to school all last year, and they actually did not wear masks, and they were not, not sick one day.
I would, I would like to counsel, I would like to counsel not just the board, but also those assembled to, I mean, this, this portion is for us to talk to each other and for you guys to observe that process. So let's keep it to that. Okay, go ahead.
It's hard to not feel for everybody involved. And the chance to pass some discussion. I certainly wish that none of this were current political on either side of events. Doesn't matter who's side of venture, it's been political. It's really hard for me when I look at some of the data as well, children versus not kind of leaning towards Jennifer's, Ms. Leoni's point that it's affected, it's higher now than before, before it was non-existent. So, yeah, it's 110, it's 110 of one, it's two, you know? So I'm really kind of swayed by the overall numbers of data we have available to us, and then the mask-related data that we have as well. But more importantly, than all my thoughts on that, I don't think it's fair for anybody to take my options. So if I want to go, and I want to, and I have three, I have four kids, they all, three of them are from Danny Boone. If I want to mask my kid, I have the option. If I don't want to mask my kid, I should have the option to mask. If I don't want my children around kids that don't have masks, we have synchronous learning available. That's phenomenal, even applauded by many different schools out there, districts out there, the effort that we've made to make so that children have the opportunity to learn more of a freshman environment versus virtual. And we also have a virtual environment. So there's options out there for these children that don't want to wear masks. And then you hear a story with the young lady back there where the masks is actually a piece almost over child. No child's death is acceptable like that then. We don't have, first of all, we can't tell you that there won't be 40 more children that have issues with masks, or 40 more children that have issues with this virus. And then last but not least, is we have the option if we go longer. The numbers are so insignificant, my family members live down in the river county of Florida, and it's a hot damn town. It hit 23,000 cases last week, that's the average, the LA average case. 72 of Berks County. Next week, it gets up to 1,200, maybe we change our options with that. Because of where we stand right now, I kind of have a tendency to think, give the parents the option to make a choice on what they want to do. Because the parents with masks still have their choice. We mandated taking it away from one side of the...
I'm not sure of the numbers, but I saw like 101 cases in the past few days. That's what I, I saw.
101 cases in Berks County in the past two days.
It's the 70 average.
Yes, okay.
38,000.
It's 70 average, and even if we make it 100, it's not 20,000.
Oh, no, 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 it's not.
It's going up, there's no doubt about it. And you know, honestly, I agree with you. If we see it go up higher, we have to make a decision then.
What is higher? I'm concerned with that.
We're still, we're still not in that, that red zone. There's no one coming.
One point I would like to raise, sorry, this is different with kids, 11 and under, they don't have the option. Vaccine, it's our number one protection, I'm telling you.
Vaccine is the number one, vaccine for older. Remember the kids, the kids last year, the kids last year weren't getting it. So I understand what you're saying, it wasn't the number one for them, they weren't getting it, they just weren't getting it. They weren't spreading, they weren't getting it.
He didn't have a mask?
Well, I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah, my kids, I have two that got it as well. I have.
Well, the thing is, the Delta variant, you don't know as much about Delta as you did with COVID was last year. And so that, I think, is a concern for many parents, as the policy's spread amongst kids. But then, in the, you know, the tradition in school, yeah, to find the masks. And I think that being further, it's an idea, I mean, I guess the whole point is that once the 11 and under get vaccinated, they're going to be here with the mask. So I think in the beginning of school is a great time to kind of see how it's going to test with masks, how it's going to play out. We'll be noticed.
And one thing I'd say first, infection, there's a lot of it on both sides, back and forth, who knows? One thing I did notice is flu vaccine. Nobody has flu vaccine.
Third time. Anyone else on the board like to comment?
I also want to point out that kids have been at summer camps and daycares all summer without masks. And we have, we have not had issues. So I don't understand how when they go to school, we have to make masks mandated, but they're going to go out to Urban Air, they're going to go to daycare, and we're going to school, they're going to go to Target, Home Depot, wherever they go, with their parents without masks. It doesn't make any sense.
Well, the point is that the other children, the parents that are more cautious aren't there, and that's, I think, that, I mean, that's what I come back to in my head. Because I feel similar, I personally do not want to wear masks. I order, I think it's terrible. But I do recognize that there are parents that are terrified of losing their child. That is the biggest fear of any parent, is losing a child.
But there are parents too, that we heard tonight that are terrified to put a mask on their child, and I agree with that. And if I bring it on, I have on, that's your only argument at all.
But then why are we saying masks mandated for everybody, and you have the choice, instead of making the choice and making it that you can't wear a mask?
I think a big part of the mask protection is the person who's wearing it, spreading it.
But we still have the option.
Spreading the disease is the worst.
We still have the option to do synchronous learning.
Vaccinated people are getting the Delta variant. It's true.
Fifth, fifth time.
But just again, I'm just, I understand what you're saying, I can't disagree with any of that, I just don't think that, you know, mask the child. Mask the child.
Well, what if they, if your child's sick? Don't bring the school, wear the mask.
We know that's not going to happen, we know that. What I'm saying, it gives them an option, if a person who doesn't feel that the mask protects them alone, alone, and everybody has to mask, and stay home, and do synchronous learning. That's, that's where, that's where I, that's where I, that's where I think.
Well, that's what taking out of the way, the kids, the parents that are concerned about the disease, don't want their kids around, and you take the option of their going to school.
Four kids are dying from the flu.
It's for both, how their masks are.
Okay, okay. Sixth time, there is, you, everyone in the audience has offered their opinion, we know what your opinions are, and, and this is time for us to deliberate about what's going on. Nothing you can shout out from your seat or the back row is going to change the vote of a single person up here, I can promise you. So please just don't do it. Okay, go ahead.
So it's something, if they feel that masks work, and we have to universally mask all of our kids, I'm not understanding if they wear the mask, how are they not protected? And why are we taking the decision charge? I just, I just don't understand.
No, no, it's too late.
So it should be a choice.
Spreading by our own.
What I, what I hear is that every, no matter which decision we make, there's going to be a group of people that feel that we've taken away their freedom to send their kids to school. So that means somebody's going to be unhappy. Is that not a fair assessment? And so is there anybody who hasn't offered their opinion about masking 11 and under that would like to do so?
I think the one thing we could just bring up in front of everybody here is that, you know, we're, we're two weeks away from our next meeting. We could make a decision next week that we change things, no matter what our decision is tonight. If the numbers were to go up, then, you know, then, we're going to make that decision, maybe if we voted against masks.
Yeah.
I will give credit to the administration, I think, from this point of view, and I'm not, I'm not, I got to tell you, I'm like really on fence now.
I know.
But we're doing this black and white, and this is, to me, this is all you ask for. I mean, if, you know, right now, kids cannot get the vaccine under 12. So we're drawing that line right there. We're saying after they're 12, I mean, they, you know, I will speak, and I, I just want everyone to know, I have three kids that are in this school district right now. Now, I happen to have all three of them, my youngest is 12, so he's turning 13 next week, but it's, it's a tough decision. But my, it's, it's a tough decision, but it's, it's, you know, just, I don't know. I, I, I feel for the school district right now, the administration coming up with this decision. Because it's not, no matter what we do tonight. But I think that, I think one thing is really huge is that we could make, we could flip-flop this in a week. You know, we, I think kudos to the school district. We've got a lot of, I mean, a lot of people in this area as well. I worked in Blue Bell, you know, could not believe the plan we came up with. And it was a great plan last year. I mean, that's, that's, and that's kind of where I'm following. I'm following a lead. I don't like masks. I'm the first one to say I don't like masks either. But I don't know. I'm not saying one way or the other right this second, but it's a tough decision. It's tough. And I, I totally respect everyone's opinion one way or the other. Because it's, it's, it's terrible. I did appreciate some of the medical people over there, here, and getting their stats. But it is, it is, I don't want to call it political, but in a way, it's, it's, you know, one way or the other. It's, you know, I don't know, I'm going to speak too much shit. But I like, I, I do at the moment, like, the idea at least that we're planning a safe up to eleven. If that changes tomorrow, like Pfizer just got the NDA approval. They're saying within a month, the kids under eleven will be getting the chance to get the vaccine. You know, that's, that's, that's huge. You know, I would be the first one to come in here and say, take the mask off if we go that way.
So Ms. Albright is on the phone. I wanted to ask you real quick, did you have anything you wanted to add to the discussion? Bev?
I know she's still on.
Yeah? Is there anything you want to add to the discussion about masks or no?
Um, no.
All right. Ms. Bev? Okay. So I know that the, the administration worked pretty hard to come up with something that felt sensible and felt like, seemed that it was, um, the idea that, the idea is that kids that are under the age of eleven, you know, their parents don't have the choice to get them vaccinated, to get them, to get them the cup, to get them the protection, the best protection that we can be providing our community is for all of us that are able to get vaccinated, get vaccinated. That is the best thing to give the, this community the herd immunity that it needs. You know, Berks County isn't there yet. And then you're, you're, you're gathering together a group of eighteen to twenty-four people, persons, who are all not able to get vaccinated into a room. And they're not there the whole day. It's not like they're, they're, you know, under, you know, it's not like they're under arrest in their, in their classroom all day. But I feel that the, being able to have kids that are eleven or under wear masks and the, and the professional staff that are working with those students to also be masked, to protect those students. Because those teachers have the opportunity to get vaccinated. If you have a child that's twelve and over, you have the opportunity to get that child vaccinated. You, I mean, you don't have to take that opportunity, but you have that opportunity for that student. And I feel that this is a good compromise, but it's not. If we do this, it wouldn't be permanent. Because once, once they do allow emergency authorization for students that are younger than eleven to get the vaccination, we would probably be back here having a discussion saying, how many weeks after, after that's available for students five and five to eleven, will we be, you know, getting rid of the masks? That, that would probably be the discussion that we would be having, you know? And, because no one likes the masks. As someone pointed out, no one up here is wearing a mask. I mean, we're all, we're adults. And I know, I know that at least the two people, as long as I can say that, the two people sitting next to me, they're both vaccinated, so am I. And, and, so, no one's going to be happy with this, with, with the decisions that we make tonight. Because, I shouldn't say no one. A whole lot of someones are going to be unhappy, no matter what decision we make. I don't know if there's any more that can be added to that, to that discuss. There were a lot of, I'm trying to keep my comments, there were a lot of comments made up at the mic. There were a lot of really good comments made. There were a lot of comments made that, to me, I don't think they were factually accurate. But I'm not going to go and itemize those because it's just, it's pointless. Because, because what we're trying to say is we're sticking to, you know, eleven and under can't, can't get, can't get vaccinated. So we're trying to give an extra layer of protection to those students that are in our buildings.
I have a question for you. One, um, that's a question that's not dated. People that are vaccinated can still get new variants, correct?
People that are vaccinated can still what?
Get this new variant, is that correct?
Yeah. But it's less, it's, it is less likely.
Well, no, Kevin, Kevin.
There are still, they, they can still get all the old ones too.
I'm vaccinated, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand. People that are, people that are vaccinated can still, can still. And it's the best, and that, that's the best thing that people can do to prevent themselves from getting really sick.
Second question is, is that there is a lot of evidence, and we're down this path where we're trying to really protect kids. We authorize N95s, it's really balance of it. I, I don't disagree with that science that I'm seeing all of the places that have cloth masks. It's ten percent at best in some of the studies that I've seen where they've actually gone for the papers, things aerosols that are created by ground. So N95 is causing a big, big gap at least fifty percent. But really truly is our goal to protect our children. We should consider thinking, suggesting we do, this is a conversation, and then they were already thinking about it, right? Do you want to consider taking that?
N95 masks, N95 masks are, and people up here, can you correct me if I'm wrong? Uh, N95 masks, they, they do create a little bit of a better seal around, around the sides. As long as you don't have a beard, and I, I haven't met too many eleven-year-olds with a beard. But, um, so they do create, they do trap a lot of heat and moisture in them. And I don't know if you, if you'd get a lot of compliant mask-wearing with, with children. Because we, it is hard enough to get children to wear the regular masks. Now, if all your, you're not, the, the, the point of the cloth masks is not to stop every little drop or molecule, or, or, stop every little virus particle. The point is to stop the big respiratory droplets from getting out into the air aerosolized. You know, it's.
I agree with you. I'm reading a study from the University of Waterloo called 2020. There's people that set up, mannequins, they put masks on, all these different masks. They were actually studying aerosol, percentage of aerosol that made it past. And I'm just suggesting, like, that we're going to go this path. If the goal really is to protect the kids, we'll go that way. And I'm not suggesting that, I'm saying, why would you not go that way? It's ten percent versus fifty. By, the study shows common masks primarily due to prompt use for fit, we'll read about ten percent of the Excel aerosols are off. The main drop is a redirecting motion at the top of the mask where it hits over the nose and escaping to the end of the air filter. Unfiltered, by contrast, the higher quality N95 filtered more than fifty percent of the Excel aerosol. That can accommodate, accumulate inwards and spread quickly in length of virus length.
But, and my, my understanding is that the CDC's guidelines are that regular cloth masks, three to five, I'm sorry, three to six, um, feet of social distancing where possible and frequent hand washing is perfectly acceptable. We're just adding, they're all part, all those things are part of the, the layers of protection, right? For people who are unvaccinated. You know?
I'm good with it. I just want to make sure that we brought that up.
You are, you are getting into a situation where, you know, and we, we did provide a cloth mask to everyone last year. Provide, um, N95 masks are disposable, is that correct? For the most part? They're disposable masks? Yeah. So, um, N95 masks, um, we, we would be paying, we would be paying for a lot of that. Yeah. So. What? Oh, Bev, go ahead. Ms. Albright?
Yeah. Um, so I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. Your administration is recommending that children eleven and underwear mask?
Correct.
Okay, and how is that going to work in the middle school?
The, um.
Half the sixth graders are eleven, half of them are, and then the seventh and eighth graders don't have to wear them?
Right. The, the sixth graders.
Who's going to be keeping track of that?
Yeah, the teachers are going to have to. There, there will be separation between the sixth graders and then the seventh and eighth graders.
To the extent feasible.
To the extent that's feasible. And, and yes, the teachers in the, in the middle school that deal with either sixth grade or, or who deal with all grades have to deal, will have to be, wear, wear a mask. Um, that, you know, again, this hasn't been approved, but those.
No, I'm saying that that's what the recommendation is. And my question is, well, my statement is that I don't think it's very fair to put another path of the teachers to determine who's how old and who turned twelve last weekend, who's supposed to be wearing one and who's not. And are they accepting exemptions?
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 Mm-hmm.
Yeah, like religious exemption.
The exemptions would be available under applicable laws.
Yeah, they would be available if needed.
I'm sorry, I can't, I can only hear you as super. I can't hear whoever.
That's because I'm super loud.
No, you can hear my next to the microphone.
I know.
She didn't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bev, Ms. Albright, exemptions would be available as required pursuant to applicable laws. So a parent whose child had a medical condition or a disability which would prevent them from safely wearing a mask would be entitled under applicable law to exemption if the mask mandate was enacted by the board. I also note that at this point, absent a motion, a motion second, and a affirmative vote in the joint of the board, the current health and safety plan will remain in effect.
Correct.
Without change.
Correct.
So if a board member, with a board, once they change the health and safety plan, you're required a motion second and affirmative vote.
Yep. So, um, do we, do we have any more questions, comments before we move on to that?
Is there any concern with, is there any concern with sixth graders being the seventh and eighth graders that aren't masked? Having the same condition that we have, we let people not wear masks? Isn't that the same thing?
There's, they've made some, um, there'll be separation, yeah, by floor.
I just want, I didn't want to be critical.
No, I understand.
This group to be extended, not that.
Yeah, I get it. Yeah, it would, it, it, you know, it would, it, you know, if, if the, if the separation were different and it fell like nice and cleanly along the fifth grade to sixth grade line, that would make this decision a little easier. But, but it doesn't, so that's the way it, and.
Makes that overcharge.
Right.
I was in another school today for my daughter, and they had masks optional. And I would say in a classroom, it was about fifty-fifty. In the hallways, maybe sixty, seventy, they had masks. Most, a lot of the kids would take them off at their seat, even though they were optional. They'd take them off at their seat, but they would put them back on to walk through the hallways. And that was a kid doing that on her own. That wasn't teachers telling them, so even with optional, you're still going to have a good portion of kids that are wearing masks, no matter what age or grade.
Right. I understand. Anything else?
No, I, I guess I do. I mean, I, I'm going to jump on a little bit of what Bev just said. I was thinking the same thing. I mean, I, I, I think as a plan, it's a great plan. I, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'll stick forward. It's a good plan. It's, it's a black and white plan. But to her point, I don't know how you control, you know, the eleven-year-olds and twelve-year-olds from not connecting somehow. You know, and you're going to have people who are teaching the twelve-year-olds and not the eleven-year-olds. If they don't have to wear masks, I mean, maybe we could talk about that. I mean, how does the teachers feel about this plan or, I mean, do we know?
Yes.
I mean, I, I just.
All, all, all the adults in that building would be required to wear a mask. So because there are eleven-year-olds in that building, especially at the start of the school year, which is.
So it would just be seventh graders, eighth graders, and half of sixth graders that didn't have to wear them?
It would be, that, that is correct. The, the folks, the sixth graders who are the age of twelve will not be required to wear them.
So the staff?
The staff and the entire building would.
Yeah, but that, that, so there'd be, possibly, there could be five kids in one class wearing it and the rest of the class could not.
That is correct, depending on the age of the student.
So the teachers are going to have to wear this?
We would have to make that available for grade six, yes?
Now, all, all teachers from eleven below, obviously, yeah, fifth grade, whatever, they're required to wear masks even if they had the vaccine?
If, if that's, if the board puts a motion forth and indicates that they're interested in considering a recommendation that administration made, the adults in the primary center, the adults in the intermediate center, as well as all of the adults in the middle school would be required to wear the mask.
For this eleven-year-old that matters, eleven-year-old matters the most, even if some twelve-year-olds don't have a vaccination, would it make better sense to cut the line in middle school up and make it optional? It's going to be optional anyway, for the most part, for a lot of children anyway. Even the ones that are masked, still during that optional situation, it would make better sense to say.
That's a board decision.
That's a board decision, yeah.
I'm just starting it out there.
Yeah, I understand.
If we go this direction, we're talking about a lot of different options.
So we're saying.
Eliminates that, eliminates, and we're not going to, if we're not going to give the option to the rest of the school. We're putting, the eleven, eleven-year-olds are the same decision as no option. I mean, it's not giving the option, so it doesn't, it doesn't really make a lot of sense. But I understand why we're going, because that draws a line.
Okay, and if there's a vaccination, eleven-year-olds can't wear masks?
Can't, but it's a logical, the law is clear.
But they're not, but they have the option. They have a choice.
If the mask, uh, is.
If that girl that don't have the vaccination, she don't have a problem with kids coming around saying things that are optional?
Yeah, there is not, this isn't a recipe, you're not going to take away all the recipe. This is trying to utilize some.
Any other comments, questions from the board? Does anyone feel like they would like to make a motion?
Well, I'll make the motion, I mean.
Go ahead. Which one? What motion would you like to make?
Mrs. Shaw, would it be a motion to approve the administration's recommendation for revision of the health and safety plan as today?
That it?
I'll make a motion that.
That he just said?
I'll say it.
Okay.
Just pull a vote.
Yes. So Beverly, I don't know if you heard, we, there was a motion and a second to vote on the administration's recommendation, 11 and under. And so I think now we're going to vote. And now we're going to vote.
It's also changing the language of it, strongly recommended.
Yeah.
In compliance with the, all the administrative recommendations I presented for a discussion for, for the superintendent.
Okay, Mr. Scott?
Okay. Ms. Albright?
No.
Mrs. Bell?
No.
Mrs. Scott Free?
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni?
No.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scott? I'm going to say no. Mr. Strobel?
No.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Soloson?
Yes. Yeah, so the motion fails.
That motion does not pass.
Yeah. Is there anyone who would like to make a different motion? Based on, I, I don't, the only other option is, there, there are two options, I guess, based on our discussion. There, the two discussion, the two options are to leave things as they are, or to make a, to make the, a broad line cut, a bright line cutoff at, at fifth grade. Those are the two options.
Me, me, why at the fifth grade? I don't know.
Two elementary buildings.
What, what Mr. Strobel recommended to just say that we would have.
That ninth grade and up.
No, no, it, no, it'll, it's.
Middle school and high school.
Middle school and high school would be masks strongly encouraged, and that the elementary school, that would be the other, that would be the other option beyond what we, or, or leave things as they are. Those are the two options. Do I have anybody who's interested in making that motion?
We, we don't need a motion to delay that as is.
Nope.
Correct. So if we're going to leave it as is, do I have anybody who's interested in making the other motion? If not, then we're going to move on. Okay? All right, new business, I got nothing. Presentations.
Am I allowed to talk for one second?
Yeah.
This isn't, this isn't an applauding situation either way. I mean, I, I got, well, people are leaving, and, but I got kids in the school district too, so, I mean, this is a really hard decision for us. So the fact that people are applauding, that's ridiculous. I mean, it's not, it, there's, no, it is.
Now we have a true clap, thank you.
No, I'm just, we're glad you see what we're doing.
We have a choice, we just. We have a choice, thank you for it.
You can't tell us that our thought is ridiculous.
I didn't, I didn't know, I didn't say.
You said my opinion is ridiculous.
I didn't. I didn't say.
You said my opinion is more so what?
I just think.
That's our opinion, that's how we feel.
Okay, timeout. B.
Don't acknowledge us.
A.
I just want to respect both sides.
I know, I understand.
Have I said it wrong? I'm sorry.
No, I understand.
I just want to respect both sides, that's all, that's all I want. If I missed over, I apologize. So it's not, it's just, I want to respect both sides.
And I have to just, I have to agree with Mr. Scott that it was a very hard decision and one that I personally agonized upon through all the week and looked at various sources of information to come up with my decision.
So, because I believe this couple weeks, because we wanted to.
That's the other thing, but I know you don't have to worry.
Right, I have the option.
I don't, anything seems tough to get solid information.
And, okay, so we'll get there. Presentations by the public on issues. I, I will ask that if you spoke for three minutes at the beginning, I appreciate your comments, but I, I'd rather you didn't come up again the second time, you know, just for brevity of the, of the meeting. Do I have anybody who's interested in coming forward?
Can I say something, want to do a talk there?
Ah, yes. I know her, so I can pretend to be irritated.
Jennifer Harding, also Drive Locusts, PA. I am cheer commissioner for BMF, and I have been trying the hardest to get room space, and it is absolutely awful to work with a program that I've never done. There's no way to figure it out with YouTube that says, hey, you should do this. And now because it has taken so long to be to put in our times, we're in conflict other times. And the middle school uses our mats, the BMF purchased. If we can't get our cheer space for our time, we will take our mats, and I believe they run around $3,000 apiece, and there are six of them.
I will say that because of, like, last year, last year, we didn't, we made, we made the room space inside the buildings very, very limited, and we are just ramping back up to, to the way things used to be at this point, esp, even at the middle school. So, and a lot of the people that you, your group used to deal with are no longer your contact people here, which.
I'm Mr. Rigger, so.
And that's, and that's, that's.
I can't reply to any of that, you know, but I know he's very busy.
I, I understand, that's what I was going to say. So we will, I saw Dr. Cooper writing a note, and we'll, 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 we'll try to figure something out.
Okay, right now I have to go in every week and try and preserve space for the, till December.
Okay.
And it's a motion.
All right. All right, anybody else? Go ahead.
I just have a question about the virtual option. I did try to enroll my daughter.
Yeah, I, I'm hearing the same from other people. We are hoping that you guys can, after the meeting's over, are you, yeah, Mr. McKnight's going to get some names and, and grades and see if we can figure out where the, where the disconnect is. Because, because what, what you're saying to us is not what we're intending. No, no, but that's. Yeah. So I, I will ask that Mr. McKnight, because.
I'll be here.
Yeah, he'll, he'll be taking questions after, after the meeting.
That's what, I made that comment at the beginning.
That's what he, that's why he asked.
You want, you want virtual, we'll get that straight away.
Yeah.
Okay, awesome, it's perfect, thank you.
Okay. Oh, I turned my mic off, sorry. Our.
If I have an infinite canvas question, do I voice that in or not?
No. Just because, just because we've only ever used that as, we've only ever used that as parents, so we're, we're not going to be able to answer a technical question or anything like that.
You would reach out, reach out to the building principal of the building, you're having the, did your child attend?
It's not, it's, it's a multiple issue. I'm just looking to see if, like, if the, if the app or the format itself or the platform is eventually going to show, like, busing for two homes as opposed to just the five three homes. Is that, did I say that right?
Yeah, no, I, I hear what you're saying.
I, I, I think so, and, but I can't answer that.
Because if it doesn't now, and that's.
I mean, I, I would have to, that's a pretty technical question that I would have to ask my technology director, who'd have more information on that, so.
Yeah.
I'll take that back to him and see if we can get some information out.
So, any, any other comments, questions from the? Were you up before?
Yes, I was.
Okay, just keep it brief.
It's really, really.
Just keep it brief, yep.
N95 masks, have you ever seen one for a child? I'm a contractor and I built homes.
Okay, anybody else?
I just have a question, any clear, concise yes or no?
Okay.
I feel like the DBDL question wasn't answered 100%.
It's available, reach out to your son or daughter's building principal.
So I, I'm thinking like further down the line, if something changes that is in place and they can still keep the same teachers, because I've asked, I've done that.
Yeah.
I've asked some different schools, numerous things, and I get different answers. So I just want to know, like, if he has Mr. Cooper for math, can he, and we decide to keep him home, can he still continue with Mr. Cooper in math?
In a synchronous environment, yes.
At home?
Yes. But are you, are you selecting just one particular course?
No, no.
It would be for the entire day?
Like, for instance, if I decide to pull my children out to go to stay home, because I feel unsafe, children to just say, okay? Can they still continue?
Yes.
The same classes and have the same teachers that they did when they were in school?
If it's sync, if it's.
A yes and a no?
If it's synchronous, yes. If it's asynchronous, in other words, if it's during the school day, live instruction, live stream, yes.
So they would keep their same schedule?
It would keep the same schedule. But if you're moving to an asynchronous platform and our Blazer Virtual Academy option, that, that would not be the case.
Okay.
Because that's a third-party vendor at this point in edutainment.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, and I will say, like, last year, the, the high school and middle school, we had a significant amount of these students who were home, all weren't doing the half, the one we go on, when we go off, they were home the whole time. And in those situations, it made it very difficult for us to maintain all the classrooms the same when so many of our students were home, you know? It, we are fortunate that this year we, we won't be in that situation where we'll have so many people home, so we should be able to maintain that. Something, something pretty drastic would have to happen for.
Right.
You know, not to hap, not to happen. But you'd be discussing that with the principal if that, if that's what happens.
And we have more resources, we have more of those parts.
We do have more resources at the school district level this year. I was disappointed that we had to have this conversation at all, I'm disappointed that the school, that the, that the situation nationwide, statewide, countywide is where it is. I mean, yeah, we're not Florida, but we're, but, but things aren't as good as they were in June either. And I know we're going to keep having this conversation. I, I hope that, oh boy, this is going to sound, well, it's going to sound the way it's going to sound. I, I hope that in the future, when we have to have this conversation, that you saw that this board was deeply divided on this issue, and I hope that you take that as a model on how to handle conversations where you're deeply divided in this room. When you sit here as members of the school district, as members of our Daniel Boone, Blazer, Lunan community, that you have respect for each other's opinions, and, and that you can manage to sit through two and a half hours without bursting out with, with whatever you've got to say that you didn't get a chance to say in your three minutes, you know? I, I hear you, and I see that you're passionate about this issue, and I, I don't need, we don't need a call and response every time, you know? It's, I, I just, I'm really happy that we, we handled this, this conversation better than a lot of other school districts did, but I'm really disappointed that it wasn't better than it was, because I have a lot of respect for my neighbors, even though we don't agree, and I just, I want better of us. We're better than that, most of the time. So, can I have a motion to adjourn?
This is your one.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'm going to get it.
All right, we're adjourned.
All right, Bev? Hello, Bev? Bev? Hey, we're going into executive session, so I'll give you a call on your cell phone to my cell phone, okay? All right, bye-bye.
All right, I have to say. I mean, all, all the.